Yeah, I got it. Good morning and welcome to regular session, Monday, June sixteenth. We have a full form present, carry certified meeting properly posted. You'll please rise for prayer and pledges, James.
Father, we come this morning. Taking your presence in this court. And you may add these gentlemen in the direction that you would have them go. And they yield to you, to you only. Father, we thank you for the word that you gave us this morning in first Timothy, chapter four and verse twelve. It reads, let no man despise thy youth. But be thou an example of the believer in word, in conversation, in charity, in spirit, in faith, and in purity. Father, may each one of us realize that we're in this place because you allowed us to be in this place. That allow us to be led by your spirit in this court. In Jesus' name I pray.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our honor, Texas, the flag of the United States, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Didn't receive any citizens input, got any? Consent agenda contains fourteen items.
Thirteen.
Four and thirteen.
Make the motion, we accept the number four and number thirteen.
Second.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries number four approve payments of claims and invoices submitted for payments.
Um, I was reading through here, we got violations for EMS traveling those. Why do we not have easy tags for them?
You'll be seeing my name in there probably too, because we went through there a while back and we couldn't get through traffic any other way. But I don't know our circumstances. How, how much do we actually go down there? That's. Rachel, you out there?
I did not see her.
She's at a training session or something this morning when I called her.
Well, I just, I want to point that out.
Yeah, I seen it, but.
Move to approve for.
I'll second that.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries thirteen, proof facility request twenty twenty-five dash seventy-two allowing Winona Martin and group to use the gazebo on July third, twenty twenty-five for the reading of Declaration of Independence. That should.
Yeah, you go.
That should read Winona Long Martin. We think she got married, we have two names, but it was.
Same person.
Same person. So our application says long, but we think she got married since, so.
Alright.
I, I moved to approve.
Second.
Moving seconded all favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Number fifteen, discuss and take action, approve meals, beverage, refreshments, not exceed seventeen hundred dollars for Secretary of State Regional Training hosted by Walker County Accessor, July eighth and ninth.
Good morning, y'all. Um, yes, so, uh, Walker County has been selected along with thirteen other counties in the state to host a Secretary of State's regional training. Um, the final agenda is not finalized yet, however, it does include things such as chain of custody, legislative updates, best practices, and hands-on training on the elections RLA. The mandatory audit for all counties beginning in twenty twenty-six. So we will be utilized, you know, as a training just for like a whole half a day is taking our ballots and doing this audit of which we've never done yet. But it'll be a good hands-on training for our county and the others. Um, the SOS training is opened up to all counties, um, and to their election officials to accommodate fifty to seventy-five attendees. Is a working today training that we'd like to provide a limited breakfast and lunch for all attendees, including the state officials, of course. Um, we have the storm shelter reserve, we just need help with the food. Um, I'm asking for not more than the seven hundred dollars, um, that would include breakfast, lunch, and refreshments for today.
Where's the money coming from? You have it or you need it?
I don't have it.
Alright, we're looking at you. Okay.
This is for one time. Uh, for this personal training. Um, I do know that I'm gonna go have a budget workshop later where I am adding a line item into my budget because all the mandatory train, this is not mandatory, this is just a regional training. But all the mandatory trainings that we've done since I've been elected, I've paid for personally. So I think that it would be great since we are being, I don't want to use word honored, but the fact that Walker, that Walker County has been selected. I'd like for us to be able to, you know, accommodate, um, this, and they're coming from Brazoria, they're coming, it's not just like Montgomery County or, or Madisonville, I mean, they're coming from all over, um, Texas here. And again, there's thirteen that were selected and we just happen to be one of them. I'm sure do our location, but I'm sure because we have a great elections department.
So. At one point in there, you said something about auditing our ballots, would explain that to me?
Yeah, it's a new audit, I don't know a lot about it, came out of last session, not this last, not this one, the session before. And so they have some kind of a way of picking certain ballots, I can't really talk about it much because I haven't seen one yet. But it, it has nothing to do with what we already do. So already by law, we already have to do a partial manual hand count after every single election, meaning the state says you count these three precincts and you count this race by hand. And that's the audit process we have now. In addition to the partial count, now there's a computerized audit that we'll be doing. Uh, again, I can't tell you too much about it because I'm not an IT person, but it is very computerized. Um, system that we're, I guess, we'll be doing starting next year. But it'd be good to see how it works. So we are taking our ballots over to the storm shelter and they, we are doing one a mock. Using our real ballot, so it'll be good to see how that's going to work for us in the future for twenty twenty-six.
Like a motion to approve not to exceed seventeen hundred dollars coming from contingency.
Second.
Moving second all favor raise your hand.
For much, you have a great day.
Sixteen, discuss and take action on approval of claims, invoice, other items for payment as presented by community supervision and correction. This one.
Just gonna say, normally these would have been presented as part of the bill change that, uh, mix up. So, uh, Kristen put it on the, uh, agenda, there is a minor change after audit of about twenty dollars in the amount of the payment.
Everything else was good?
Yes.
Make the motion, accept number sixteen. As presented.
I'll second that.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion. Seventeen, discuss and take action on the purchase installation. Metal doors at the JP three office by cowboy contractors in the mountain to exceed forty-seven hundred dollars from the project.
I got my question answered downstairs, so except for these guys now.
So. These doors are for my jury room, my jury room door and for my office door as well as the entry door to, to the courtroom itself. Basically, the doors that are there now are hollow. And like we're carrying on a conversation right here, if you're in the jury room. You can hear this same conversation sitting in the courtroom as well as my office. So. What I wanted to do was. To, for one. Get doors that are insulated to help. Insulate that sound, so if you're in the courtroom, you can't hear what's going on in the court, in the jury room. The other thing was I wanted metal doors to also help with some security.
Sure.
So, um. We have two bids. The first one was sixty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. The second one was forty-six hundred and. Sixty-six dollars previously. The Commissioners Court approved eight hundred dollars for the doors through the maintenance.
Last budget, right, the budget.
Yes, it's the current budget year. So I'm just asking to follow through with that and get the doors and get them installed.
So what do you need, thirty-nine hundred dollars?
Pretty much.
Okay, if I'm gonna make the motion to approve agenda item seventeen, not to exceed forty-seven hundred dollars with. Four thousand dollars coming from project contingency and then budget balance this year first.
I think the eight hundred went into Larry's budget.
Yeah.
So we'll just work on that.
Say forty-seven hundred dollars for project contingency.
I got a motion as second all favor raise your hand. Eighteen, we're gonna pass nineteen, discuss and take action to authorize the purchase of rapid recovery license of amount of twenty-three thousand, hundred and four dollars and seventy cents to be paid from the IT project funds. Dan online?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Uh, so Rapid Recovery is our backup software. Uh, we've had it for ten plus years. Uh, in the past, we had two licenses that we kept under maintenance. Uh, this year, uh, Quest reached out to me to inform me that we were not in compliance with the. Number of licenses that we needed. Uh, they submitted two quotes, one per device and one for total storage. Uh, so I selected the total storage quote because it was less and more flexible. Uh, so to get compliance with the licenses, we need to, um, purchase twenty-three, two oh four seventy, uh, to, to be compliant. And then the ongoing cost after that would be roughly seven hundred dollars a year, similar to what we pay now for maintenance.
Anything you have in your budget?
Uh, project funds.
So you don't have any in your budget?
No, it is.
That's his, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Any questions?
Only question, I mean, the coverage is, I'm assuming the coverage is the same and what, what we're seeing is what we got. The, um. The coverage is the same for the two, there's no, there's no switch offs. One, based on total size versus individual, everything's the same?
Yes, the, the coverage and, and everything's the same, it's just a, a different model for licensing. Um, instead of doing it per backup server or device. Um, we do total storage, which would just be more flexible. Um, so right now we're backing up about twenty-five terabytes. This cost will cover up to thirty terabytes, so it, it's just more flexible instead of being per device, it's total storage.
Alright, I make the motion to approve agenda item number nineteen, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and seventy cents from IT project funds.
Second. Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action to authorize renewal license and support for. BOIP phone system not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents to be paid for at IT project.
Uh, yes, sir, so last year we did the voice, uh, IP phone system upgrade out of project funds. Um, we did not take in account the ongoing cost at that time. Uh, during the budget prepping for this upcoming budget, uh, I, I caught that and so I put this on the agenda. To go ahead and get the renewal for this year, uh, June twenty twenty-five paid for. And I have added this item as a budget fund to be accounted for in future budgets.
Technology is not cheap.
Always on.
First year that maintenance is due on, on the replacement phone system, so it's an ongoing cause, but, uh, not budgeted this year, so the request is from the IT project funds.
Is it gonna be this much every year, probably?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
You sure we need all them phones? I don't answer this, okay.
Alright, I'm gonna make the motion to approve agenda item number twenty, as presented from IT project funds.
I'll second it reluctantly.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss, take action to authorize purchase of Microsoft three sixty-five G three license at the yearly cost of fifty-four thousand, one sixteen. Point four six to be paid from IT project funds.
Hmm, you're killing this fast. Damn.
Yes, sir, um, so during, during budget, I caught that, uh, originally our initial plan was to upgrade our exchange server from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. Um, however, I caught that both twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen are end of life, October of twenty twenty-five. Um, so this was originally just going to be a regular budget item that was submitted for approval. But I did not want to wait till October first, um, to, to start the transition. So I'm, I'm asking to start this project, uh, by initially purchasing the licensing we need, uh, to do our transition to the, the cloud.
This will be ongoing to us, so.
Uh, yes, so this is a yearly cost, um, for a full year. Uh, when we actually make this purchase, it should be prorated, so I don't know the exact number of what would be for this initial purchase. Um, our licensing goes through, uh, November of twenty twenty-five, so it's gonna be for a partial year. Uh, but this, the, the, the price notated is for a full year and an ongoing cost.
My question.
So Dan, it says Adobe and Microsoft software, does that mean that we're gonna get Adobe and not have to do individual Adobe for every department?
Uh, where do you see Adobe, sir? I'm sorry.
On contract.
Contract name?
Let me see, let me look at the.
Third line under number one.
Okay, on the quote, um, no, this, I'll get specification on why it says Adobe, but as far as I'm aware, Adobe products are not. A part of the, um. M three sixty-five, uh, G licensing, uh, government licensing. What is covered, I did submit a backup for what would be covered. Uh, let me pull up that documentation real quick.
Let's see, we get a bigger mailbox for our emails.
Uh, yes, sir, um, which, uh, that, that is one issue that we're currently battling with, uh, some, some people, uh, having to have their mailbox increased. Um. So it's a hundred gigs per mailbox with a, uh, auto-expanding auto archive. Uh, so that will alleviate the issue with space for mailbox. Uh, of course, it includes Microsoft Teams and meetings, uh, SharePoint with individual, uh, OneDrive storage of one terabyte per, um. Employee. Uh, then it has other benefits of data retention, labels, data loss prevention for email and files. Uh, sensitive labeling, um. Let's see, but yeah, uh, I'll get clarification, but Adobe products are not, I don't know why SHI has it labeled that way, but I'll get clarification on it for you.
Yeah, I, and looking at it, it's, I think the line one tells us what they're quoting. And then the contract, that just how they label it internally probably covers that, and would be my guess, but.
And willing to know what level of, if it's part of it.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up?
Need to know what level of Adobe, is it a generic Adobe's or?
Uh, I'll, I'll get that specification, but as, from what I'm aware, it's, it does not include Adobe.
Right.
Copy Adobe Pro. May.
But just, just need clarification.
End result is we ain't gonna talk.
You gotta do.
I'll make a motion, we accept number twenty-one, not to exceed fifty-four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and forty-six.
I'll second it.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action to authorize moving forward with the counties, Microsoft three sixty-five migration project.
Uh, yes, so this is basically a continuation, first we need the, the licenses to be purchased. Um, and now I'm just asking for approval to, uh, go out for bid. Um, on, uh, doing a transition from on-prem, uh, email and local file storage to Microsoft Cloud.
And is, is all of the old, like, my emails twenty-one years old? Um, is all the old emails still gonna be accessible when we migrate to this three sixty-five?
Yes, sir, the, the plan is to have everything fully migrated.
I can motion to approve point two.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-three, discuss and take action on creating and hiring a temporary employee, IT technician one.
From budgeted funds.
Uh, yes, so I spoke to Ms. Amy to see and, uh, we, we looked at my current budget and, uh, we do have enough funds. And in my budget to cover a temporary employee for the, the rest of the fiscal year. Um, so I'm asking the court to approve a IT technician one, it's, it's a lower position, um, at a rate of twenty-three dollars an hour, up to twenty-three dollars an hour. Depending on experience to, uh, help out the, uh, IT department.
And how many positions do you have open right now?
Right now I have one open position that is posted. Um, I have five applications and I selected three to move forward with, uh, interviews. Um, right now it's at the point where HR is doing the employment and reference checks. Uh, but we should be scheduling those, uh, three interviews this week. And the two other. Uh, applicants I would say would be more suited for this temporary position if they're interested in that.
Okay, Dan, so you're creating this position, right?
Yes, sir, it's, it's a new position.
Uh, and where do we, I mean, so. We should, where are you getting the money from, I guess is my question, because all your ass, all your money is tied up with your other employees, your other position.
Uh, it, it's, it's already budgeted funds in the salary. Um, it's coming from when positions were vacant or, um. Not, uh, paid at market.
So you got the money. Is this something you're looking forward, uh, forward to maybe continuing through the next budget, you gonna ask for it or where you going with it, Dan?
Uh, yes, I would like to continue, uh, I do have it in my budget request for the upcoming budget process.
Okay, well, you, you know you stand a chance, if we don't approve it, you'll have to let this person go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you got the funding to do it?
Yes, sir, I do.
Like temporary, we would establish a termination date, September thirtieth.
Yeah.
That we could rescind, but we have to have a termination date on it.
Alright.
Yeah, cuz I, I don't know, I, I just, you're taking money from, from jobs that are, I mean, from positions that are already budgeted.
Yeah.
Uh, that could backfire on you in a heartbeat.
There are sufficient funds there.
Okay. It'll get, it'll get him to the next budget and then if we don't approve it or do approve it, then we'll move forward from there.
Budget, whether it, because he is saying temporary.
Yeah.
So the, the job.
I'm good with it temporary, so you're saying temporary.
Whatever the court decides for next year.
Alright, I agree with that.
Be good. Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion to a, a, approve agenda item number twenty-three, hiring a temporary employment with a termination date September thirtieth barring further court action.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Dan. Discuss and take action on health insurance renewal for plan year twenty twenty-six.
Ms. Amy.
This is our insurance renewal rate for October first, um, full average. Was somewhere between six and eight percent, ours came in at four point two percent for the year. Um, so roughly four hundred and sixty dollars annually per employee, um, one hundred and eighty-four thousand for the year. Um, so if an employee has family coverage, it's gonna go up five hundred and thirteen dollars a year. Um, so this is just a renewal, motivation, point out a few things for you.
It's not bad, I mean, it's bad, but it's not as bad as we expected.
That was.
Or not as bad.
I heard eight hundred bucks.
Not as bad, but.
Yeah.
Um, we kept the. Incentive program in for this year as well. I feel like that maybe is what is contributing to some of our numbers because we're doing. Um, if our employees go for the physicals, they get the four or six hours, um, so I think that's catching some things that may contribute down the road to some bigger problems, so we're catching those early. Um.
I thought it was all our hula hooping at the health fair.
That's what I'm saying. So even that, the, the major change is going to be on the pharmacy side. Um. CBS and Kroger are no longer gonna be, um, included as pharmacies that we can use. Um, so they said they're gonna reach out to everybody that uses those pharmacies, um. That's the only draw, drawback to, to all of this, but I want to let y'all be aware.
So what is the purpose of that, why are they doing that? That's the two major pharmacies in this county.
They did not.
Think Fergatrop, they dropped TDCJ a couple of years ago, I think, yeah, my wife had to move hers.
It just said to help with rising proxy costs, overall prescription growth savings. That they're gonna transition to a more focused network as part of this CBS Kroger, United Pharmacy and Albertsons will no longer be included.
Well, who do they include?
Um, HEB, ruptures.
Walgreens.
Walgreens.
I don't know which one.
Sam's, if you're south do that.
If you sit in the line at Walgreens, I'm maybe faster to go and see one.
That's true.
Yeah.
Which one's which? Which, which one's Walgreens, which one's CBS?
Walgreens on the right, CBS.
Pericos.
Which way we going?
Yeah, we moved ours and it wasn't that big of a deal, it's all same stuff.
But I just have to move.
So once you were talking about Amy, the, the, um. Uh, what you calling it?
Pharmacy?
No, no, the, the ones in the, yeah, I'm drawing a blank now, it's what I asked Mr. Tricky about a while ago, the, the bill, is that the, the, uh, doctor's visits, the, uh. Physicals?
Okay.
Is that what, is that what I asked you about?
You were asking about the payments for the physicals, that's basically when an employee's being hired.
Okay, that's the new employee.
Yeah, this is totally different.
Yeah, so now like on our incentive program, if you go to the doctor yearly, do your yearly physical checkup, um. Insurance pays that, you pay your copay, and you then in turn give you four hours of comp time to use later on.
Okay. So you're moving, I can't make that motion. I don't like it.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item twenty-four is presented.
Moving second all favor raise your hand. Motion, motion carries, twenty-five, discuss and take action on defendant. Discuss and take action on defendant access software addition from Tyler.
We have meeting a little while back, um, in regards to this. This is basically allowing the defendant to be able to go in. Through the Tyler Justice Senate system and make payments on their cases. This essentially would eliminate the traffic payment that we currently have set up on the case management. We have a lot of issues with that, of people paying the wrong courts, things of that nature. So we feel this would, one, assist with that, two, um. It will allow the staff to use the system instead of us having to use our credit card machines. Um, we'll still have to have those for records management, not, not case management. And the fees are the same as traffic payment. It's passed on to the defendant. To where the county will have no cost with this. And I had sent this to Quentin for review and I think he was. Didn't have any objection.
Okay.
And this was back to county clerk, district clerk and all four JP's.
Everybody's good with it, everybody, all the folks. I'm making motion to approve agenda twenty-five.
Second. Moving second all favor raise your hand. Twenty-six, discuss and take action to execute engineering contract with law engineering for GLO bit. Grant contracts twenty-four dash zero six five dash one four one dash E nine nine nine. And twenty-four dash zero six five dash one four four dash F zero zero three.
Morning, Johnny.
That's my motion and Mr. Johnny wants to talk.
Yeah, go ahead and talk. You standing up anyways.
We've got two contracts here because there's two contracts with GLO. First one, ending in E nine nine nine, covers the shelter, precincts one and two, road projects. Precinct four drainage project, and then the other one covers precinct three, um, all your drainage stuff and. These are, um, all, all the terms of the contracts are dictated by the GLO, including our percentage of funds. Um, different size of V G's and comments. Uh, and we're excited to get started.
We're ready to get started too.
Second. Questions? Moving second it all favor raise your hand, twenty. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on payment Texas Association of Counties property renewal. For July twenty twenty-five dash through June twenty twenty-six at the cost of two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Walker County coverage and a cost of five thousand dollars for twelfth and two seventy-eighth Judicial District. C S C D coverage with policy changes as noted.
I've got a couple of questions on this. If I'm reading this right, our deductible is ten thousand dollars. On our structure, the way I'm reading this.
Who's our insurance firm? Who's gonna answer these?
It's the, you're sure. Or Emily, I think Emily's worked with, um, the insurance quite good.
I, I think it went up. The property went from five thousand to ten thousand. Here.
But that's what I'm reading on here. So my question is, when you start looking at actual schedule. We've got a lot of stuff on here that's either under ten or right at ten. Why are they going on? I mean, for deductibles standing in the. You know, Tam Rhodes ninety, ninety-eight hundred bucks, you know, twenty-nine, two thousand bucks, thousand. Why are we, I mean, it's, it's not much money to ensure, but. Ensure them for less than the deductible.
Ellie, are we doing a replacement value?
I believe.
I would think it probably is.
If so, that might be the reason, but I don't know.
I'm thinking the Tam Road is if something goes down on one greenhouse, it's probably gonna hit the rest of them or the cover. Pile up five or six, seven of them. Little twist or wind damage, something like that. I don't know.
Not that walkway at Pavilion for Tam Roads, eleven hundred and fifty-three dollars a year. Well, that's very minor, but. If you're thousand. It makes sense since. Um, deductible's ten thousand dollars.
We can always.
Well, yeah, but I mean to replace it. You're not gonna.
And that's my question. Is that a replacement value? Is that eleven hundred dollars? I'm sure nowadays it's gonna go to fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. I get that, but. I, I don't know.
I'm not the insurance person, so I can't answer your questions.
I know we've, we've kept everything, every structure, um, the only thing unless it's been taken down. Like if it's been. Removed, then that's when things have been removed in the past.
Is this part of the liability policy too or not? Does it just structures?
This is just structures.
I think that's why it's important. We know that they're building stuff when it comes up.
Well, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but like all that stuff out there, I think they build all that stuff.
Yeah. And we just. Cause they just put up another building those day we didn't know about.
Yeah.
We had to add it. They're buying it, uh, the greenhouses on, they're paying for it. We're just covering insurance. We didn't cost us a penny to put it up.
Let's pick on Bill. Road bridge precinct three stores. Buildings value is seven. The contents thirty-eight, and I'm not being mean to you, but the total value is twenty-five. I mean. Dawson's twenty-six dollars a year on our deductibles to brand.
Right, that is the, uh. That's the, the constable storage building that he considers stuff locked up inside of. You know what we could do? We could actually, I mean, I think we, we make the motion to approve the payment. But whatever day it's physically due between now and then, let's spend a little time going down and then if, if the department head, maybe ask the department heads to review their. Things and if they say, yeah.
Well, like your carports on sixty-nine hundred bucks, seven thousand.
Yeah.
When the last one blew over, we didn't claim it, right? Did we just, we, we, uh, moved it to junk?
No, I never had a carport blow over.
Those little storage things.
Yeah, I never had.
Wanted to jail that blew over.
I think, um, I mean, this is kind of quick. But, um, I think, I think we make the, my motion's gonna be approved agenda number twenty-seven. Um, as presented, but, uh. And we could ask the department heads or whoever's in charge of this, ask the department heads to look at items that they think they might wanna recommend to pull.
Well, you know, if, if, if we could get, you know, if it is replacement value, I've got some stuff that does need to blow down.
Yeah.
Come look at some of my building.
Ms. Allen?
My suggestion would be to get a representative from PAC to answer these questions.
That's what I count where I think we need to go to, because, because I can't answer them.
Yeah. Well, it was different. I mean, they went up from five to twelve to ten, so I mean, it, it's different now, so.
Explain the coverage that there, is it replacement value? Is it?
Yeah.
Value at the cost of the time the destruction takes place or exactly how it's calculated? And that probably would help in your decision making.
Yeah, so, but my only, only question is that this is renewal for July. So I'm assuming this bill's due next. This, this Friday or something like that, you know, that, I don't know when it's due.
It's due July first.
It's due July one, so we have two, two weeks.
But they only send this thirty days out then, boys. So that's why it's on right now.
Sure, yeah.
You know, we're, we're paying for the, the scale office at the waste station, the cannibial at the waste station. Um, I know one of those storage buildings and I think both of them moved when they put that. Building. Think it really needs to be going over with pretty, pretty heavy.
And we probably get a credit back. Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I think we should pay it to stay in, stay under coverage. And then I like the idea of calling a tack person over and going.
Yeah, go and get a call into them.
Can drop off, they can credit it back. So that's, that's my motion to approve agenda item twenty-seven. I'm sorry.
All right, one more. We, we've had this debacle with the Veterans Center. Is it ours? Is it not ours? It's insured on here too.
The, uh, Veterans Building is insured? And, and we've been told it doesn't belong to us, right, Quentin? That Veterans Building ours or not?
Are you talking about the hearts?
The hearts, yeah. The hearts.
And there are contents included.
Public County property. Yeah, it's gonna have to be, it'll have to be insured for that. It's on our property.
Building is theirs. Property is the county's.
I've, I've had lots of problems when we have these kind of issues. Yes. It should have, we go back in time, it should have never happened, but, but it did.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have something out there by you, the simmer behind you over there that should have never happened either. So what do you do about it?
Well, I, I know like in, in, in our situation, if it ceases to exist. The building goes back to the county, all the improvement. So, you know, do you keep insurance on it for that? I guess that's some justification.
Yeah.
You know.
Oh. Yeah, I think you have to. I mean, it's, it's some money, but it's not a ton of money. It's some money.
No, it's ten grand.
Yeah.
Eleven grand.
Yeah.
And, and, and if we get a tack representative out here, we got a lot of site improvements, like. Here's one at the, at the JP Ford, it's a site improvement for sixty-five hundred bucks. You know, if that was a parking lot, then. There's, there's a lot of them on here.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to go over it very heavy. And look at least figure out what, what we're insuring.
Sounds like that's a committee you need to form with. Judge.
I don't mean, we're gonna put you on it with them?
I don't, I don't think you won't be on there.
Drop it, drop it.
Uh, we'll get Ally to set up with Cheryl and have a meeting with the tack and we'll send y'all in back and y'all can come to. Any department head. We'll send that out to, send the list to every department, get them to review them and.
Yes.
That work?
Yeah, absolutely. My motion and you second amendment, I'll second.
Okay, uh, moving second all favor raise your hand.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Twenty-eight, public hearing concerning amendments, any subdivision regulations under chapter two thirty-two of Texas Local Government.
Before we jump on that, can we, can we push those to the end? We got some topics that want some stuff. This might go long. I know it. Five minutes or an hour.
It's not gonna take that.
So, so my thought is I'd like those people to put input in on it instead of just getting everything approved and leaving.
Well. That's not gonna affect them because they're already approved, but their subdivision, the ones that are here.
But they might have another one coming.
Yeah, it's, you know, if they do any more in the future, it's definitely. Is what it is, but yeah.
All right, twenty-nine forty.
Stephanie?
Monster, you back?
Um, we provided two options.
Yeah.
For you, um, option A is, uh, the concrete only, I'm trying to play a little story, concrete only option. Uh, option B has, um, both concrete and asphalt, but it limits, it limits the use of asphalt to, um. Facts that are three acres and greater and, um, it also. Increases some asphalt weaknesses and the subgrade thickness in the details.
There is obviously an option C, which is. Guys wanna do.
Yeah.
We didn't, uh, prepare beyond this. If you guys wanted to lower the acres, done by acres now and asphalt. He said it at three only because. Not because of some reason that we had.
Oh, that's.
So that number can get lower.
My option hasn't changed since last quarter. I don't know about the other side.
I read through the, both of them, uh, leaning, I'm not leaning, I'm for the, uh, option B. The, the blended with the. Three acres and above being having asphalt, uh, option. People want to come to our community because of what we have and I think concrete only. Drives it to where the developers are gonna have to. Go smaller lots to come out to where they might, uh, make money and wanna continue on and.
I'm gonna say that the newcomers need to pay for something. And they need to pay the entire cost of what it takes to keep from redoing these roads. For many, many years to come and not put the burden on the taxpayers. But we're in public hearings, so I'll wait till we actually get in the.
Yeah, you know, and I was, I was. Very much thinking of B, but really, the more I, the more I thought about it, it, it's. To, to go back and forth is, I think it's a problem if somebody does a subdivision, and this is the scenario I put in my head. Somebody does a subdivision bigger than three acres and the road is, is a hot mix asphalt road in front of it and we say, hey, we're not gonna accept it. Because it's hot mix asphalt or whatever. And somebody builds behind them and they put in concrete and they're like, hey, we want county coverage. On our roads, now we're having this mishmash and stuff like that. So we don't have a good option. For roads in the future as far as being able to keep up with them and, um. We're, we're not going to get to the point of not taking roads. That's just not something that's in the, um, in the scope right now. Um, I'm, I'm, I, I've just decided, I think option A is what works for me, so.
I'm glad to see you come around, boo.
It was a hard come around. I wish we had another option that, that can take care of it. We're, we're now. You go back ten years, like we said before, I could mention here, if, and I'll pick on Grand Ranch, but if Grand Ranch had come ten years. And, and we knew what we would have these many years later. We might have, you know, it might have been like, you know what? That's gonna be your private subdivision. Y'all, y'all gonna have it or make your ribs concrete? Or something, but we're, that, that area is, is doomed to fail maintenance wise. It just is.
Take a lot of money to fix it.
The, the thing about this, that the people that's moving here now are not really country people. They're coming from the cities. And. They don't fit well with. Asphalt and silco road at all. They really don't. I mean, and really they need, they need, uh, curb gutter, honestly. You really, they need to be paying for storm drainages and everything else to pacify what their needs are, but I don't think we can ever get there, but, uh.
Yeah, this, and the city's coming our way. It's not just the people, it's the city's coming our way.
Yeah, it's, the people are the city though.
Yeah, and the improvements are, you know, you know, what they expect is coming with them and when you, you know, if you have a neighborhood of five hundred homes. And that's what they expect, it's hard to say, no, we're gonna give you an asphalt road in six years from now after the garbage trucks have tore it up. You're gonna be mad at us.
And, and we can't afford to do anything.
We can't think about it. Because like two years subdivision that you paved this year, did you get those years to save up and wiped out your budget?
Yeah, yeah, we did the same thing on Timber. You know, I had saved for a good while and we're saving for some other roads right now.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's painful and. We could. You know, it, it's the argument we see on Facebook all the time is, how come y'all don't fix them? We're like, you know, give us a nickel on the tax rate. Yeah. We could have some fun, but the, the biggest conversation is we want that nickel back and y'all fix them. So the only way we can get in the middle is like, look, let's build something that's gonna stay, that we don't have to have that nickel to go mess with. And I don't know any other way around it. So it's, it's a, it was a tough realization, but, um.
It hurts.
But, you know, just hurt for a second. Once I got past it, I was like, you know, it's just the cost of doing business.
Well, and it kind of reflects back on what Ronnie said, you know, we, we have, we have people already, you know, and, and we're here to protect them people.
Yeah.
The new people coming in and developers need to, need to pay for whatever they want, you know, not leaving it back on. The taxpayers that have been here forever, you know, and, and it is a different kind of people.
Yeah.
Uh, I feel sorry for, for, for the Texas Grand Ranch bunch, uh, who, who inherits that because it is gonna be a, a nightmare.
Because we know the same.
Because they are different people, you know.
We hear the stuff, you know, I just, I paid eight hundred thousand dollars for my house. How come my road's not paved?
Yeah.
And, or how come it? It paved and I've been here eighteen months and, and right down the edge where the garbage trucks go was just tore up. What are you gonna do about it?
Well, then you throw this book at them and say, look, you know, this is what I got to work with and they, they don't care, you know?
Yeah.
So.
So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm that guy.
Uh, I made a couple of notes. One is, just so you guys noticed, Stephanie's office did work to prepare an, an improved asphalt standard. That's additional subgrade. It's gonna, additional call, add calls, but. For performance. Uh, the number, the second thing that I want to point out, I think everybody's aware of this, but just for the room. Even if, whatever you guys adopt, you know, there's, there's areas of the county where our regulations don't set the. Set what gets constructed, right?
Right.
So you're still gonna have to, that, that issue, that side issue.
Absolutely.
So this is a significant departure if you guys made this move either way, while we know the past.
Right.
So we'll make it, it will, it will widen some of the gaps that we have between our.
Still ain't gonna fix. We got neighborhoods that are getting built and sold and we still ain't even got to the pot from them yet.
Right, yes, so yeah, I won't fix that at all. Kind of go back, so we talked about inside the ETJ and stuff like that, you know, like we said, in Sterling Ridge, that. That contractor voluntarily stepped away from hot mix and is going with concrete, concrete. He knows, he said it's. A little more expensive upfront, but I'm done with it and I don't gotta worry about the phone calls. a little more expensive upfront, but I'm done with it and I don't gotta worry about the phone calls. You know, and a, a bad subgrade under concrete is bad, but it's not near as bad as a bad subgrade under a hot mix road that, that, that engineer signs off and step, you know, puts his name on it and hands it to us in case this will work, then.
Then they have, then they have to eat it.
Yeah, four years later, you're eating. Yeah, it don't work and you're like, that's what we got, so.
I, I did see, uh, in, in both of these A and B that, that we were doing away, and this is second question, the H D P E.
So H D P E is not as strong applied as polypropylene or R C P. And so, um, even some of the manufacturers are recommending you put the polypropylene in place, they underneath roadways. You have concerns about your roads lasting longer, and my recommendation is to remove the H D P E options underneath the pavement. So if you've got a, um, curb and gutter system where you've got storm sewer, you could have that storm sewer installed behind the back of curb. So you have a C inlet that, that sits, um, somewhat behind the curb, you could have that. Parallel and adjacent.
Yeah.
Just not those crossings.
Uh, and to that point, I don't wanna step on those or elongate this session. Guys had sort of both drafts, the two drafts include several things that are mirrored in both drafts. That's one of those things. If you'd like, we can go over them, you know, individually and go through the red line with the court, if you guys w- want us to as an option. If you don't wanna do that, if you've read it and you, you don't, you don't wanna do that, that's fine too. Either way, you, you guys wanna, wanna do it, we could do it. Both of them include a, a blanket list of changes that were, um, um, there's only a couple, I think, that fell into that line of, of technicality and, and changing a standard. The bulk of them, uh, had to do with clarity and administration of the, of the code. But we'll be glad to go over the, the red line if you guys want. It's up to you guys.
Uh, so what was, hold on, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the, the, the changing from the coverages, is that because of the, the new standards, text out standards? Is that the twenty-four standard?
That actually allows H D P.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm I'm not as excited about that one as other folks might be. I don't, I don't want, because when I replace a cover across the road, that's what I use. If I can put a, a foot of cover over the top of it and I encase it in cement stabilized sand or rock or whatever like that, I'm done from now on. I don't wanna mess with concrete covers because that's what I'm digging up to replace with my H D P E. I don't wanna mess with tin horns and steel. And I can't regulate a new contractor to say, hey, you can't do that. And then me on the next block over dig up and do it. I can't do that.
Well, you're doing it for a reason, Bill. It's cheaper.
No, I, you know.
I mean.
No, I would, I would much.
That's the difference between maintenance and construction too.
No, but I'm not gonna, I'm, I, I don't.
I mean, you, you take, honestly, you take a concrete set of coverages, if you set them stabilized sand like they're engineered to sit.
Yeah.
Then you're done. You know, I, I, I mean, they don't burn out, they don't, you know, they don't move because they're done, right?
Yeah.
They're immovable.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, but that's what I'm saying.
Eleven, we lost a lot of colors.
But man, that's what I'm saying, the tin horns are gonna rot out. So, you, you know, obviously, yes, we've got old concrete coverages, I'm still replacing.
Yeah.
But they're, they were just thrown in the ground and set.
Yeah, and that's what we run into. They separate because they wasn't sitting in stabilized material or whatever, but.
And then I get the reason you use them. I mean, I, I spent sixteen thousand dollars the other day on one thing, color.
Right.
You know, I still color.
I like, I got one joint under the roof. There's one, one joint in the street, it's in, if it, you know, if it does move a little bit, it's forgiving, it moves with it. And if I do it like by the factory specs, it's a concrete coat. You know, it's gotta put a cement stabilized sand over it, down and under it. And it's there forever. So I don't, I don't like that one at all. And I don't see how a, a developer could say, hey, one standard for y'all is one standard for us. That's not fair. That's not, that's not the way it should be. You're right or it's wrong. And, uh.
Doing on the roads.
What?
That's what we're talking about, doing on the roads. I was fixing to say the same thing. Same thing on our roads.
Well, yeah. She's going back to what you said, it's maintenance, so. I, I, I mean, yeah, if I could afford to, to.
We can't build, we don't have the money to do it.
Yeah, I would love to.
Yeah, we're not, we don't build new roads, we resurface. That's what we do. So that's different than building a covert, right, tear a covert all the way out to the actual bottom of the world and build it all the way, but we scratched the top six inches off of it.
Yeah.
And grind it up and put it all right back in the same spot. So that one I don't have a problem.
I'm not against taking them out. I'll be real honest with you, you know, we, we got in a big argument about the, 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 the virgin, uh, H D P Es versus the, the, uh, recycling.
Yeah.
You know, was, was a big mess.
Was recycling at all, but.
And, and, and so, I mean, they're the contractor's gonna do it for a reason. It's cheaper. I get it, you know, but, I mean, I don't like tin on, you know, absolutely hate our ground, eat some of it, you know, um, arguing a lot of times. But they're cheaper and they set them and, and so I'd much rather have steel or concrete. Keep the stone right. So, definitely. So.
Greg, you got something? Pardon me?
The polypropylene.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, weight and, uh, it just performs much better. Slightly higher cost.
Yeah. That's the, which one? Is that the light gray one? Okay. I can live with that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's permitted.
So we're good.
Now we're better.
Yeah.
I had a big old speech.
I knew you'd come around.
What you got, Greg?
Yeah, my concern is not the pipe, you know, the, the pipe's vulnerable. Um, you know, I feel like the vision has always been for this county, kind of a larger lap type development. I've heard y'all talk about it, avoiding the high density. Um, for your schools, your services, all those things. And to not have an option, to me, concrete kills a five, ten acre, fifteen acre type development. You're not gonna see somebody build that. So to take that option away, to me, steers away from what the vision feels like it has been. Um, puts a lot of stress on your, you know, your schools and services when you lean towards high density, which is what concrete does. So, you know, in the small lot, absolutely, um, I just, whether it's two acres, three acres, five acres, I feel like the stone where there would be a break to help encourage the type of development I feel like we've always looked for. And that's as a citizen, um, and a community member more than, you know, a contractor or developer. To me, your regulations dictate, um, your vision dictates your code. And full concrete all the way through says, we don't want large lots anymore. So that's my concern. As far as the details, the concrete, the polypropylene, all that's not a huge deal. Like taking away all avenues for large lots is what concrete does, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna stop them from building whatever they want to. Uh, the, the growth is coming regardless of what we do.
No, I agree.
Yeah, and, and I don't think it's gonna affect the larger lots either. I mean, as much as selling this land for, y'all can pay for that thirty percent or whatever it costs for. Cause if, if we stay with asphalt, we're gonna have to up the standards to the point that it's gonna cost the same as that concrete. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean. If we get a. I don't, I don't agree they're the better street. I mean.
Yeah, I appreciate your opinion. I do, I mean.
But we've also got, you know, banners up out there that built a Thornbury. I mean, it's concrete streets. They're, they're big lots. And so, uh, it, it works.
I agree with Greg totally on most of that, but one other thing that I worry about is like, what about the future? How are you gonna fix the, I mean, concrete at some point's gonna fail. So what's the price difference to fix that versus what y'all are fixing now? So y'all are talking about the maintenance. How are you gonna handle a ma, like what, what's the plan? Your, your.
It'd be, it'd be the same thing you do with all this asphalt. You cut it out and fix it.
How much more is it gonna cost you as well?
Forty years from now, I'll probably be dead. So.
Just can't let the next guy worry about it, huh?
Yeah, absolutely. You need to push it as far as you can because we can't keep taking these roads.
I, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, I, I think, I, I just don't, I don't want y'all to not think about that in the future, you know? I mean, some, some of them ain't last forty years, some of them may fill up twenty years. But how much is it gonna cost you? You can't fix the ones you have now. How are you gonna be able to fix one that costs twice as much? That's, that's my, a concern that I have as a citizen.
You can't keep taking these as, as killing us right now either. The, the option is to quit taking them completely, but I don't think these guys will go for that. I would have no problem with quit taking all the roads because they're not a benefit to the taxpayers. They're really not. I mean, what are they doing to help our taxpayers?
And in the end, you still got the same headache, you know, private or, or, or public. You, you're still have the same headache.
They still looking.
They're still gonna be calling you, you know? And so, yeah. You, you do what you can. You hope it makes forty years, you know, and, and that's why they call it maintenance.
They're gonna let it do.
I, I.
You better be thinking down the road, though. This court better be thinking that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thinking down the road.
Oh, we could, uh, we could fix it right now if you want to take out road bonds and, 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 and fix all our roads. But are people gonna go for it? Absolutely not. You know, I mean, we can fix it. But it, it takes nothing but money. You know, and if we continue on like we're doing, we're sinking. Absolutely sinking.
Definitely what we're doing's not working.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, but I just, I don't know that this, I'm, all I'm saying is I don't know that it's a better plan. I'm not, I agree there needs to be a better plan, but that's just not too sensible.
Well, any, anytime you're dealing with infrastructure, it, it's no right or wrong, you know? I, I mean, you, you do what you can and you do what you think's right and, and hopefully this works out if it goes through.
Find out in a few years.
Yeah, well, hopefully it's forty years, you know, and then nobody in this room, other than maybe some of these showing up young ones I see out here. I tell you, I ain't, my dirt, my rooms gonna still be dirt.
I'll, um, Greg, the statement Greg made, it, I will, you know, I agree with that, that you will probably change the type of development that's coming in with the concrete street. You will have different people looking at, you'll have a different type of developer looking at development. Um, if only concrete is on that. It likely will, um, lean more towards a tighter lot. If you still have an eighty foot frontage, so, so that's not, you know, extremely dense development standard, but the key word, I, I agree.
Did option B have anything tied to the lot sizes? Did option B have anything tied to?
Three acres.
Three, three.
Three acres is larger.
Because that was what was mentioned last time, you know, that number obviously modified based on the, the court wants to do that.
So is, is there any avenue to obviously y'all, y'all want to go towards concrete, which is fine. Is there any avenue to steer it towards bigger lots without, I mean, because I, I, I agree. I think it's everything's gonna go to the smallest lot possible because that's the only thing you'll be able to afford. Is there any way that y'all can help control? Cause as a citizen, I don't really want that, but is there any way y'all can help control build lines? Maybe change the frontage size, something to help say, hey.
We've already done really all we can do, in my opinion. And I don't know how long it's gonna hold depending on what our legislators do.
Yeah, eighty foot.
Eighty foot lots.
About the lot frontages, right? And I guess there's been tension about how much of that y'all can control or whatever. One thing y'all can control is build lines, right?
To a certain point. So you're talking about building setbacks.
Building setback lines, yes. So you may not be able to control the frontage, but if you put a building setback line that makes the lot not buildable, then by default, you, they have to build bigger lots, don't they?
Correct.
I don't, this, this is a question, I don't.
Now you're throwing us into that lawsuit that we know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Andy. The current setbacks we have are married off state, uh, state.
So there's some, there's some natural setbacks in the state. A lot of it. Well, I'm not gonna give you a legal opinion, but we're, we're set at twenty-five foot front building setback lines right now. Um, they're, they're a strong, strong precedent for a twenty-five foot bill setback line. Uh, there are jurisdictions that have increased both setback lines beyond that. The, the court, if they wanna look at, you know, we didn't really look at building setback lines this round. Uh, 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 draft, uh, was a lot of discussion previously in the court about updating or changing building setback lines. But the court wants to look into increasing building setback lines and, and potential reasons to do that, that would, that would serve the public. Um, then, you know, certainly it's something that we can look at. Uh, I don't, uh, pretend to give you, uh, legal advice on what, what type of or length of or depth of a building setback line, um, would be sufficient and justifiable under public need.
Yeah, that last sentence is, is the tricky one.
The side build lines you're talking about anyways to help.
Yes, side, front, I don't.
So your, your side building setback lines, well, I mean, front building setback line affects several things.
But it's parking.
Parking, um, those kinds of things, but, but the, the side building setback lines, two, two, looking at a couple of things. Drainage would be one thing, uh, between the structures, tension structures. And two, uh, obviously this is a little outside of my expertise, but the S D may have some recommendations related to fire codes, or some of the fire departments may, building setback lines related to fire and spread of fire. But there's some public interestings on sides of those as well. Um, that we could certainly look at. Uh, you guys wanna look at updating those or changing those? Um, it wasn't something that the court had mentioned they wanted us to, 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 to relook at during this revision process, but it's something we certainly could.
What about length of time of acceptance of roads?
We change.
So.
We had that.
Option B has one.
Red lines, it's in here.
Option B has one, so.
For two years.
Two years if it's asphalt, one year for concrete.
Yeah, it's, it's in the option B. It goes to two years if you do an asphalt road, one year if you do concrete.
And that was my question, and option A, what's the, did we change it from one to two? And option A, it's still one, but you could change it to two.
I still think that longer time on either one of them.
I think two. I think, I don't think a year's enough. You know, because I, I mean, what we're dealing with out there is.
And you still pour crappy concrete.
Yeah.
Bless your soul.
I, I think.
Trucks over.
I would go two on all of it.
All the way across.
Yeah, well.
We shouldn't be.
I, I looked at, I looked at one lot the other day that put in a pad and it's twelve foot of dirt on one side of it. Twelve foot high.
Yeah, one truck loaded at a time.
Yeah. I started to go out there and measure it and figure the dirt, but I figured it was at least a thousand lifts.
That's something.
Mm-hmm, one, one lot.
Yeah. So put that on a, on our asphalt roads.
Yeah, no.
Seventy thousand dollar, seventy thousand pound truck, it, a thousand loads. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of weight, a lot.
Of course now, of course, I don't know if Andy's been called on yet, but all their, they're just going down to the neighbors into the natural drain. So you may have a call before it's over.
Well, and I, that, that brings up, you know, uh, I'd be on subject, but I know y'all have got these emails too from these, these guys about, and I hadn't heard anything on the federal side of it, but they're talking about raising the federal duties on these trucks.
Like, I signed some of them to it for a while back.
I mean, so, you know, if the feds do that, you, you, you know, adding that much more to it, you know? I mean, when you can go ninety thousand bucks.
They can't even keep their road system together.
So why would you?
Yeah.
I can't see.
Drive down forty-five.
I know y'all have got the email, you know? Oh, yeah, all I found a market road track, you know?
Even the interstate, yeah.
So do you guys have a punch list on your red line stuff or is it just strictly in the document? I didn't see it in the.
Yeah, it's in the document. We can go through it if you'd like to. It won't take a long time.
Probably should if we're gonna vote.
I'm sure.
Yeah, let's rock.
You wanna get on the agenda, Adam, get out of the public hearing.
You know, we're in the public hearing now.
Yeah, I think I've, like, heard.
Y'all got anything else to say?
Just, just one more, just. Sounds back what Stephanie said, I just, I feel like you are sending a message that we want to be urban. Option A says we're in urban county. And as a citizen of Walker County, I don't believe that.
I just, I just send it off, stay in agriculture and animals be out there than I have people.
I would never see that.
You know, that's where I feel about it.
Option B encourages what we all like. And option A discourages it, it sounds like we're all, so. I just.
Well, I disagree.
I feel like everybody said, we're, we're, to me, we're fighting two different deals, we wanna be urban, or we wanna be rural. This is a financial thing we're fighting with the roads. But it's just gonna dictate the direction the county goes, probably forever.
But if you wanted to be rural, I'd say don't live up and down the I forty-five corridor, I have come to realize it.
Like it.
You know, and so it will be urban before we're out here.
Yeah.
Period.
Not me.
I don't know.
I agree with it.
Old man lived a long time. We have a vision of a, a semi-rural community and we go to. Plan A, which looks like we're fixing the gado. Um, we're, we're killing that vision, we're changing our vision. So we, we're going urban.
Well, how many, think about on our rural subdivision that we have out there. We're four or five years, four or five years into it. And it's blowing up, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can't keep going this way at, at all.
Even with.
And, and option B, and option B deals with that, it, it, it puts another. Two inches of stabilization, it puts another two inches of, of base material and it puts another inch of asphalt on it.
That already gets you right up to what comes.
All right, well, I, I'm, I'm gonna throw a little something on that, we, we done this, this last G L O project. Which, we're moving on to another one. And I'm gonna put it out there right now, I am very pleased with the things that went on as far as. The end product we had. You know, we're taking an old rural road that had nothing on it. We put more rock on it, more stabilization in it. More asphalt on it. And I am still getting failures. You know, the asphalt is not working. And, and, and we're not talking about a lot of traffic, we're talking about. The structures, you, you know, they couldn't have built that road no better than they could, I don't think. But, I mean, we upped everything and it's still, it's not working. But I travel, take my wife to St. Luke's Hospital downtown quite often. Um, I travel to H G A C and get caught in traffic, have to get down on the surface streets. I have not drove across a, a city of Houston Street. Back roads or anything of it, this concrete that doesn't need. We're all kinds of repairs, it's gonna be expensive. But how old is that road? I, I don't know, Danny, I, I mean, your road is forty. Built forty-five, uh, up and down it, you're always gonna do maintenance, absolutely. They're tearing that concrete out when we're coming north, you know? My, your reference is, is cowboy country, my reference is a slab. Okay, but. Slab was a hundred years old, man. Yeah, and, and, yeah, it was a little uneven because it had settled, but it was still. Better than any asphalt, you know?
So when we do those G L O projects, are y'all gonna go back with concrete?
No, I, we were probably going to stay with asphalt, I would assume. You know?
That might be a Johnny question, what could we do, you know?
We submitted it as asphalt.
Yeah.
Be hard to do.
Yeah.
I haven't been find out if there's any kind of wheels. Then I guess from the way I do it.
Well, I know what we doing is not working. And I'm willing to make a change to try something different.
You're ready, Andy?
Let's move on to the next agenda items.
All right, we're gonna close, anybody has some public comments? We're gonna close public comments at ten oh nine. Is Luke Williams here? We're gonna keep on going with thing, thing then, twenty, yep.
As we go through, um, know that you close public comments, but we're gonna go through.
We're still gonna let people talk. Okay, twenty-nine, discuss and take action on order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-seven to amend the Walker County subdivision regulations under chapter two thirty-two. Although Texas Local Government Code.
You have to go to option A, option B, or just the change.
Side by side, yeah.
Side by side.
Most of them should be the same, right?
Correct, yes.
No, we'll go through the ones that are all the same, and that one, have that.
So I'll just go to option A. Um, if it's the options that are on the, um. H twelve. We've changed the number, we've reduced the number of, uh, flat copies that need to be submitted from six to five, um, I'm reducing. But one less milar, so only two milars instead of three.
That's all I guess you, every single milar, we've been keeping it, but. Traditionally, we require that because we had jurisdictions that wanted copies that no longer will copy, so we're dropping that number two.
Page twenty-two, uh, four point three seven, uh, we've. We organized the Senate, um, to clarify that for major flats. And. You have to do a detailed study here in the zone A, um, or if you have a water course that receives more than six hundred and forty acres. Um.
So there's nothing in here that, that takes out of compliance with the floodplain regs, it has some of its own requirements. This is just a requirement on the subdivision case. All right.
Um. The. Seven point seven. We've reduced the timeline from ninety days to thirty days to address any repairs that are needed, that are identified during the maintenance period.
The, the reason that we did that was three things, for them to respond.
Right.
And ninety days means that we would have to have a review done ninety days prior to the expiration of the twelve months or twenty-four month. And then that gives them very little time to get, to respond, uh, that, that timeline then puts us past the bond date, so. It applies up to thirty, if, if the developer says they need more time to make the repair.
The two point two. This addresses the, um, change in, um. To work.
What's the legal page to?
Uh, B two point two.
What page?
Uh, forty-one. Twenty-five to one inch or more, you can go to four to one, lot to death versus a three to one.
Okay, I was wondering how that was tied together. So it's over one twenty-five, you go one to four.
Correct, and it pretty closely ties to the urban versus rural, technically if it's a curb and gutter, it's an urban section, it could be a hundred and twenty-five foot of frontage, but it's. Urban, so this just kind of eliminates that, you could do a curb and gutter that's got. One acre lots or more essentially. Um, page forty-five, B four point seven. Um. So this is where we clarify that, um. The professional engineering plan is responsible for the pavement cross-section, uh, the ultimate design that what's included are just minimum standards for the county. And, um, they need to consider.
That was a request last commission's court that we make that longer clear.
Yeah, we need to be building to the GeoTech standards, we don't need to be building to our minimum.
It was already in there, they wanted to make it, based on court's last comments, we wanted to make it ultra clear, so we included it here as well.
And, and there's a few, we've repeated this language in the code a few times. Um, and it explicitly states that they need to include the traffic loading during and after construction. In that design. At page sixty.
You're gonna go back.
I'll go back, yeah, I'll go back in a minute, um, and compare the two side by side, this is just what's in both.
Can you go back to page forty-five? Go further. How are we gonna, how are we going to enforce that? And, and I'm talking about the. During and after construction. Cause everything we do right now is with trips per day. Period, that's how we build our roads. How are you gonna enforce the? Thousand loads that he's talking about over there?
It, it pulls down, that's during design, so typically the geotechnical engineer works with the civil engineer. And that is the design of the pavement cross-section, and so they would, they would work together to. Confirming what that traffic loading.
Make that acceptance longer. Or at a build out.
So, so there's. There's really no enforcement mechanism, like, we're not gonna have somebody out there counting trips and counting trucks. So the, the, the enforcement mechanism is a design stage. So the idea is that they would design for not both end use of traffic, but their design would also include. What's been mentioned by several members of court is. Construction phase use of the subdivision, which may not ultimately be the normal use. And then where you see the most significant difference of those. Is in the, um. Owner, uh, the, the developer builder sites, because there's a, there's a massive initial construction. Uh, influx onto those sites for a short period, and then after that, it goes to normal use. On the land development sites. It's, it's a more slow and gradual build out, so you have those trips occurring. Yes, maybe loaded to the front, but they occur for years, decades even, so.
So I, I'm bringing it up, and I was headed. Towards what judges said. When we're going through this, option A, uh, we need to add that. Years to the acceptance phase of this, I don't think it's in option A. So we need to make sure we have.
Yeah, to your point, that would be a way to test the design is just. By seeing it perform, outside of that, um, and allowing for that, like the judge said, allowing for that extension. Whatever you guys feels appropriate to sort of test it in the real world.
Cause I think, I think it was brought up last time, and, and, and the norm, we don't see anything built. Beyond our standards. We don't, on paper, right? Whatever our minimums, whatever we set our minimum is what they're gonna decide to, whether it works or not.
Typically, the, what we see in the review is that there's the minimum design is what they recommend. Which, which it may be because the engineer that's designing the payment section. Believes something less than that minimum is what's required, and, and so they're increasing. They're recommending to meet the county minimum, that could very well be the case, but.
It might not be, but it is possible.
But they're not willing to put their checkbook out there and fix the road.
What she's saying is, I have a standard that's.
You know I had to say it, right?
Very strict. And, and their determination will constantly be below it, and if the requirement is that you go to. Or recommendation or the strict standard, then they're always gonna come up to meet the strict standard, that, that's a possibility. I'm not saying that's what's going on, I'm just.
I can't imagine them being below the minimum. But I can, because of the cost of it.
Uh, page sixty. This is the, um, section where we've addressed the H T P E, and that currently it stands that it's not permitted under, or the, the. Proposed revision is that it would state that it's not permitted underneath a roadway. And, and we've also added in, uh. B twelve point twelve B, we've added additional, we're stating that the engineer is responsible for designing that, um. The bedding and backfill, uh, for every pipe, so we've got minimum standards in here, but again. The only engineer is responsible for that.
I'm good with the polypropylene. I can do, I can do a great bike, that's.
Do we have a supplier for it?
Yeah.
The, the same, so the same. The supplier that I deal with the most, um, they, they, they provide both, and they are more and more recommending that the H T P E not only be used in first, in, in certain situations. So a lot of times they're recommending it not be under the roadway. A driveway, I heard a different story, um. There's nothing in here that does not allow to be under a driveway. There's nothing in the draft. And then next, if we go to page, let's go to page seventy-six. Uh, and this is just a, something that, that we put on all the details, again. I mentioned the language is being repeated, that this detail is a minimum standard, and the final detail shall be designed, signed and sealed by a professional engineer. So it's on every detail sheet, they can use the detail, but if they're sealing it, there's, they're sealed. Um, go to page eighty-six. We thought, um, just, again, another version of that same language that we put this on. Um, on detail, the, and on the appendix sheet, the divider for each. Each section, so. The curb and gutter section, the curb details, but the pipe, it all again refers to the professional engineer being responsible for the final design. And the last modification is ninety-six. Already covered that, but again, the H T P E, you added a note on the bottom left corner that says. H T P E is not permitted under a public or private street.
So we need to amend and scroll up just a little bit, or.
Yeah, labeling of the pipe.
The labeling of the pipe needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, it does say H T P E there.
So.
It, so that H T P E. They'll allow. It's just not permitted under the street, uh, 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 under this draft regulation, if you approve it. So, uh, we still want a detail for, I think we still want a detail for H T P E, one, because it can be installed in the right of way still. Um, for example, like inlet to inlet that's behind the curb. Um, so, so this detail applies to those types of pipes.
Okay. So do we have?
Unless you guys don't want it at all, that's an option, but the way that we, that it's now is. Not, not H T P E below the, the roads and streets, but if it's a, if it's a pipe being used outside of that cover, then it would be allowed, which means we still need a standard for it.
All right, so do we have a standard for the? What's the polypropylene?
Polypropylene, yes, sir, that, I believe it's the next. Correct, yeah, so page ninety point seven is.
Okay.
Which is almost identical to this.
Should be the same, yeah, all right. Okay.
Absolutely, of course, of course, we didn't got that.
Stephanie, I, I didn't catch, or I don't remember in there. Distance, you know, we had some problems with the distance things in between them. Is it still left up in this draft to the engineer?
No, so the, the last page.
Or did you break it out?
Yeah, they spread it out.
Okay, I couldn't.
That, um, in May, so we just added that, uh, detail, and so page ninety-nine has the most current detail, it also has the same note about H T P E not being allowed under the road. Um, but it does have a minimum separation.
Okay, I just missed it.
That, you know, to help.
Yeah.
The goal is to help. Everyone in the field know.
Yeah.
So I'm having to go look at the detail for that specific manufacturer.
Common sense would tell you they're not supposed to touch, but obviously. That slipped through some of them.
Yeah. All right.
So those are the.
Okay.
Generally the. The revisions that occurred in both. So we can go through the side by side if you want, see now.
I think we're kinda wasting our time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the ones that are.
Unless you're coming over.
Some, some things.
Keep looking at you, Bill.
Be related to your roads. But that would be the difference, so, and the, and the option B. Has asphalt and concrete option, then you have language in there about when that triggers. So you have both standards called out in there. You know, option A, you're going all the concrete, so you don't have that triggering language in there, because this is not even a secondary option.
I, I would like to know. You know, a one mile stretch of. Road. New standard asphalt concrete, new standard concrete, all age. Cause we're gonna get the phone calls, y'all are, you know, y'all are killing us with this. And, um, but it'd be nice to say, you know, it costs me a hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot. To do an asphalt road, it costs me a hundred and forty dollars a foot to do the concrete. But I'd like to have that number in my.
Tell me, call you.
I don't think the exact number, right now, but it, it's about a. Twenty-five, thirty percent increase to go from asphalt to concrete.
Yeah, that's the number.
That number changes, so right now asphalt's really high. Um, and even in some cases, we're seeing it being close to the cost of concrete. Um, but. Depends on the area, it might be fifty, it's been costing concrete for some years.
But that was also compared to our old standards, yeah, you upped your standards on your asphalt and your stabilization, which drove your price.
I do, I don't know, it's not public comment, but on the. Regulations, y'all went to seventy foot right of way. The radius on cul-de-sacs didn't change, I feel like that may should change, because the fifty foot radius, they work for.
Okay, we'll look at that.
You see what I'm saying?
We'll, we'll look at the radius.
The right of way, so right of way radius is what I'm talking about, we, we've made them sixty foot in the past with the sixty foot. We made them bigger than what the standards called for, about ten foot, because the, the, the other ones didn't work. What's in there doesn't work on the ground with open ditches. Not very well.
Right, and the standards is drawn to be more generic, so it could apply to roadside, to open ditch or curb and gutter. If additional width is needed, then you may need more for open ditch.
It might be something to look at, because when we went to seventy, we just laid out that last deal, I'm like, ah, I thought they would have changed that, but y'all didn't, might be something to go overlook.
Yeah, this is just a minimum requirement.
Yeah.
So what is noted, we have a forty foot edge to edge requirement, or forty foot radius, so eighty foot diameter on your cul-de-sacs. And then a hundred foot diameter on your, um, right of way for those cul-de-sacs, and so ten feet a lot of times. Additional. Five feet on each side, right, it's, no, no, it's ten feet on each side, sorry, ten feet on each side is not enough room for your roadside ditches to fit.
So a design engineer should be dealing with that. He don't have to go by our minimum standards, but they, but they do.
That is true.
You know?
We could look at it just.
Yeah, I'm. Better for y'all, y'all go ahead and up that some, it, it actually works on the ground, I think Greg and them were the ones that were telling me like this. But like, it's just not working on the ground, so then we went to the next one, we made it bigger.
Yeah, you're pulling your ditches into plug, yeah.
Yeah, it ends up, yeah.
What kind of supply we got on asphalt versus concrete?
Kind of what?
Supply.
I see concrete trucks ever done.
I do too, but I see asphalt dipping down the highway too. I mean, we got one concrete plant here.
Supply and demand.
I, that way it's gonna, we're gonna get a bunch more concrete companies, are they gonna stand up their own plants?
Yeah, yeah.
They're not.
The what? They're not gonna come at all?
No, he said the concrete trucks aren't hard on the roads at all.
Right, well, that's what I'm.
No, they don't bother the road, but they pouring it in front of it.
They're on the dirt the whole time.
If we wanna make that adjustment. To the. Cul-de-sacs.
We can, we can add a note, or maybe we'll add a detail to, to address asphalt.
We, it's open.
Not asphalt, but open ditch section.
It's open if you want it. On the advice of our lawyer back there, we'd seem to, uh, uh, adjust these regulations. Too much. Let's, uh, let's get it done right now, we got an open court, it's all been done, let's agree on it, let's get it. Got a minute made, in my opinion.
Hundred twenty foot right of way for open ditch. A hundred and twenty foot right of way on an open ditch. Section.
You shaking your head, Mike?
Oh, I don't.
Hundred, hundred and twenty foot diameter.
Okay, yes. Yes, there you go.
Let, let's also, let's also talk about an, an increased, increased length of acceptance, cause it's not in option A. Let's, let's get it in there, what, how many years y'all want?
Damn.
Two is pretty much become standard from places I've been.
Two?
Happening two, yeah, you get above two, that's starting to get kinda, I'm, you're the only guy doing it.
Did it restart every time they fixed it?
Oh, no, nope.
That's a legitimate question, what is the, what is the? Deal after they fix what?
Yeah.
Past the two years.
And they didn't fix it right the first time, why we gonna trust them on the second time?
You don't have to accept a dang road.
At the end result, yeah, you don't have to take it if there's.
Well, we've heard that comment, and we still take roads.
Yeah.
Yep.
Whereas under subdivision regulations, you're talking about the. Inspection period and bottling. Uh, road except for. Production, not to ever modern subdivision policy, other than your current. Uh. Uh, the option is to accept roads that don't need it. But you don't accept roads through the subdivision regulations for maintenance.
So why don't we put in option B?
Yeah, but, cause we have an extended inspection period that's in there. For the county to, to review the infrastructure that's constructed under it. And that we require a ten percent bond to extend for that period. So the question is, if repairs required. Depending on how significant, does the county wish to require some sort of a bond extension?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. We're upping that year. On to two years.
No, no, no. I think the question was if you, you, you identify a failure.
We're doing two different.
Repairs during the two-year period. Is, is there a desire by the court to trigger an extension of the, of the bond? Beyond the.
Beyond the two years.
So in other words, are you going to inspect the repair longer? If there, if, if it, let's say in eighteen months, you have a major failure. And the road has to be rebuilt. Right? Do you want an additional bond to be issued at that point?
I think you always have that option as a court. You can always say, hey, you know, that hundred foot you put in, it's, it's five hundred feet down the road now. You know, we're, you're gonna do something with that. But if you're, if you're two years into a road and you've done nothing but go out and fix it and repair it and go out, and he comes to you and says, hey, y'all ready for this road? Then it's easy, you're like, oh.
Yeah, what I want.
Sorry. Or at the end of two years, you're like, hey, we had a couple repairs out there, we're kinda worried about those. You know, we'd like to extend it, or have a bond put on and extend or whatever, then. You know, if it survives, you know, we can come back, we'll consider it then. So I think those are things you come back to, but. A two-year maintenance period gives you a lot of time to visit with your developer, your contractor, and say, hey, you're, you're headed down the wrong road here. You know, you got, you got a whole section, you know, if you don't fix it, eh, you know, it ain't gonna happen, so.
Any discussion about the amount, we're still, we're doing ten percent. Of the original construction.
That's pretty standard, so.
Yeah, I think that's all right, and in my opinion.
Yeah, and if you blow through the ten percent, um, you're already starting another conversation.
So the, the last thing y'all had, y'all lowered that to five percent of the, you wouldn't want ten percent of cost.
I was.
Yeah.
Across the board.
Yeah. Where they did, they, they raise a valid concern, you know, concrete's not the end of the world, and things do go wrong. And be nice to be able to afford to fix it.
They might need a bond if there's concrete.
Oh yeah, there's some. A lot of concrete roads pour on the sun.
Like a comment, don't you?
Don't hold your breath.
I know we're not in the public, can I ask that question?
Yeah.
Are we a? Would this apply completely to private development that's not asking for acceptance as well?
Yeah, yes.
Across the board.
Yes. There, we really can't have two standards, in my opinion. One that we'll take, one that we won't take. I mean, I just. I'm opposed to two standards.
And that's where I was to start with, what you just said was like, hey. I don't wanna build your concrete roads, I'm willing to build an asphalt road, and I'm willing to own it. But then we start getting willy-nilly, and you might drive through a private subdivision to get to a publicly maintained road. And it just makes.
Yeah, the calls are still ours, we get the same calls.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I, I was exactly in that same mindset for a long time.
But that, that. You can't have a power road. You can't have a public road behind private.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how we got, uh. Problem child subdivision that. Somebody's got, uh, no names, but. The second part of it can't be developed because there's no public access from the first part.
There can be a public road not maintained by the county. It is public and it's open to the public traffic. With no county maintenance. That's a public road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you have a truly private road. They can gate those. You know, can it be gated is your question.
I think, Mr. Commissioner Decker is stating that if you have a public street that's not county maintained. That and have a county maintained street, doesn't tie to another county maintained street.
Sure you can, if you're private, from the south. There's a public road that comes in from the other end, now it's connected to a public road.
Now, that's, that's, that's.
So it's the same thing, now you got this island now of private, that everybody's gonna go this way, cause it's shorter.
You can't go out townly ranch and develop off of it.
Correct.
Yeah, because there's, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
But if it pokes through to another.
If it pump through, and you've got access.
Now you got access, so that's the, that's the stuff you eliminate, if you, if you. Don't do a second standard. So.
I like what you said, Bill, don't do that second standard. Leave the one, go on. Thank you, Bill. Good comment. Where we at, Andy? Need us to vote on this and move on, or what?
Three things that I have. That are not in either of them, that you guys have, have discussed adding. Is adjust to a hundred and twenty foot uh, right of way on cul-de-sacs on the open ditch. All sections. Uh, ten percent across the board for the extended uh, maintenance bond. Um, and which. What will really be there, because we're gonna, right now it's five percent on concrete, but now everything's gonna be concrete, just ten percent across the board. And then, uh, boo. The uh, bonding acceptance period, uh, bonding for the acceptance period. And, and I have those three, no matter which option that you. In addition to the ones that are.
You know, got any more questions? You questioned out? Andy?
I'm good. I would have liked to have seen some more. Developers and stuff, you know, sitting in here on this conversation.
We've been talking about this for two months now, so.
I know, I would have liked to see.
One, two, three, I see three.
Yeah. Yeah. But.
They're all in precinct four.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I think I missed somebody.
Where we at, Andy?
Well, you know that what shows you, Bill? What's it do?
What's that, really?
Shows you, they just gonna pass it down the road.
Gonna go down the road, yeah.
You know?
It's gonna pass to the customers regardless, but, and they need to be paying it, they, they honestly need to be paying it and not go back on the taxpayers. That's already here to fix it almost immediately. So. I guess I'll make a motion if we through talking. Make a motion to approve option A, concrete road tone, with the additions of the three. What is it, Andy?
Um, ten percent. Maintenance bond.
Ten percent minus bond.
A two-year. Period on the bond.
Two-year period on the bond.
And then a. Hundred and twenty foot right of way for cul-de-sacs.
Hundred and twenty foot right of way on cul-de-sacs.
For, for open ditch.
For open ditch.
That's those the three additions.
You'll give him a second, Bill?
I'm second to that motion.
Move the second law, if you raise your hand. Bill post. Motion carries thirty, public hearing concerning flat number twenty twenty-five dash zero one four, reply to section one. Away with place subdivision, John Sadler survey, eighty forty-five, FM thirteen seventy-five. Time is ten thirty-seven.
Did anybody hear from this property?
All right, time is ten thirty-eight.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize.
You got anything to say about? Time ten thirty-eight, public hearing is closed, thirty-one, discuss and take action on concerning flat number twenty twenty-five dash zero one four, reply section one away from place subdivision.
Well, we have some comments, uh, you guys have this letter. That's on the flat. Um. Or it's option would be to approve contingent upon the comments being that. These are unaddressed.
Has Mr. Top swing the, the.
It was sent out.
And she's in agreement?
Comments?
We made those adjustments, they're pending process, and I'll actually pick up the reply today and get it back in over to the planning office, so. Uh, but there, we just, uh, the reply is actually to correct some scripters errors essentially from a few years ago, so. And, and then we've added a little bit of area in the, the section three. Couple of small reserves that are, will be part of that.
So my motion's gonna be to approve this. Uh. Prove this, uh, contingent on the comments by the letter of June eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Sure.
Motion case. Thirty-two, discuss and take action, West Waverly Ranch LLC, a man at Thornberry requests for variance to section. Three point three six of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding groundwater certification.
And Miss Thornberry is online.
So, this is, not, not new hat stuff for you guys, the, they've got a second section of this subdivision. They're, uh, wanting to plot. They, uh, due to our code and also the state requirement. There before the court, for the court like a finding that there is, uh, um. Evidence of groundwater availability. I just have the report in your backup on lead, for what a lot of have looked at it. We talked about it, so that reads like this.
Who is that water company? Were they an engineer, or what are, what are they, L E, or whoever they are? S L E or?
L R E.
L R E. Her name's Teresa, she should be on also.
Yes.
In case y'all had any questions for.
Hydrologist.
Good.
She is on.
Yes, I'm online.
And, and we've gotten over ten lots too, uh, my, my math is probably not great, but I don't. See under ten lots, I see more than ten lots.
Um. So. This section that we're looking at is. This was the original, well, not, this is the section that we're doing right now. One, two, three, four, five, six. Three, eight lots.
They use twenty, twenty-one or twenty, it's over twenty anyhow. How many, how many lots?
Twenty total. Total. And the first section and eight. Total bunch of section.
And kinda where, where I had to hang up is, is you know, we. The first section was fine, you know.
Was before the code change.
Yeah, a, and, but now we've added twenty, even though they are big lots in there, there's twenty of them now. Um. Makes it a little harder to go with it, I guess. Uh, as far as the fairings.
Yeah, and if Teresa's on, I'd like to get her to speak to that.
I know the beginning, I don't think we've developed that second half.
Right.
But things change, and. I don't know.
Yes, I'm online, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody. Um, yes, so I prepared a, um, groundwater availability report. For the first thirteen lots, I believe, um. A couple of years ago, and now they, and those have been platted. Um, so right now it's just the addition of the eight lots. Um, so I did modeling for just those eight lots and the impacts from those lots. And then I also did, um, the impacts from the full well field at full buildout, so all twenty-one lots. Um, and we are applying for this exception, because these wells will be producing from the Gulf Coast aquifer. Um, and then the new tracks that will be subdivided will be less than ten parts, so we do. Fall under that exception request. Um, my analysis did indicate that there would be. About twenty feet of drawdown over thirty years from the whole well field, all twenty-one wells. Um, which is about eighty percent of the, um. Remain, there's eighty percent of artesian pressure remaining after thirty years, so. There is sufficient water for the subdivision, um, over thirty years at the property boundaries, there'd be about fifteen feet of drawdown. Um, and those, um, of course, have several assumptions that apply. That assumes that all the wells are pumping seventeen and a half gallons per minute, twenty-four, seven for thirty years, which is, um. You know, the worst case scenario, and it's usually pretty unlikely, so. Um, I, I did find that based on the gam properties from the, um, Gulf Coast aquifer. Uh, groundwater availability model, that there is water available for, uh, thirty years for this subdivision.
Is this individual wells, Amanda?
Yes, so I modeled, uh, twenty-one individual wells for the full well field. And then I also did modeling for just the eight lots that are being subdivided.
How, how deep is the water? Does anybody know how deep the water is to get into that Gulf Coast octagon?
Yes, so I recommended depths of about four hundred thirty-four feet at a minimum. Um.
Thirty-four.
Four hundred thirty-four feet, it's in the Jasper aquifer.
How are we gonna know that they're gonna put their wells in that octagon, because I mean, technically, we don't regulate water. And I, I always have a concern about drying up the people's wells that's been here for the last hundred years. Adding subdivisions. So what, what would make me want to know that they're gonna drill those wells down that deep?
Um, I'm not sure if the developer would recommend that, but, um. You know, this is my recommendation based on the surrounding data, so. We can provide them that information.
They've done a plan.
Yeah, we put it on as a recommended minimal depth, that's what's.
But that don't mean they have to do it, Andy, I mean, you know, and that, and that's what concerns me, when you start adding more lots and more people. The, the water's a, a major concern, and the water's down there, and definitely down there, but.
Right.
Are they truly gonna dig those wells past a hundred and eighty and ninety foot where the water's at? You know, I mean, that's what my concern is.
Yeah.
Uh, the ladies are, men and women, ladies around the subdivision there that's had water wells forever. And you add another bunch of water wells in that hundred and eighty water. Then you're gonna drive them up, I mean, that's, cause we can't regulate it, I mean, that's, that's not something we could do.
Right, right, there is water, um, the Vangelan aquifer is the shallower aquifer, about hundred eighty feet, you're correct. Um, but I went ahead and recommended the deeper aquifer, cause it is productive, and there is more available drawdown. Um, in that aquifer, so hopefully they would. Take that recommendation for a, a sustainable source of water long term. You're right, and, you know, it's just.
There's no public water service around them anywhere.
City nowhere, like, but it's outside the city, so no. Just a question, what, uh, have y'all done y'all's HOA rules and covenants yet?
Yes, we recorded with the front end.
What about on the back end?
Right now, it's recorded with that one as a whole, when we left it. We'll just inherit it with it once we record that class.
I was just thinking about tying the Jasper aquifer into the. Y'all's.
Making the requirement to go to the dip that Teresa said. We could, we can change that.
That gets you out of the top aquifer that all the old wells are in, and it gets you down into the. The, the second aquifer down there that. What she's talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, we can't regulate that, but.
Right.
Just to ensure. Just to ensure water.
So why doesn't, like, I, I'll talk to that. That's just odd that they wouldn't even.
A whole nother discussion.
Okay, I mean, that's twenty something lots. You're probably talking ten, you know, ten grand a well all of a sudden for a five hundred foot well or plus or minus, so that's, that's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, can't take care of what you got. Sometimes it's hard to find out.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I dug a well here a few years back and, and a hundred and, no, three hundred foot was like fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's huge money. Huge money.
Yeah, and that was several years back.
So it was recorded on the plat, on the, on the first.
Uh, no recommended, well, that, we, we're, to be clear, I think everybody.
Yeah, no.
Permits or anything.
And that's the only thing we can do is recommend putting it on the plat.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
That's what's been pretty typical.
Was it, was it the same dip on the first one as it is this one? Or did she?
Teresa, do you know that answer on the dip?
Yeah, it's about four hundred thirty-four, four thirty, something like that, four thirty-one, so it's also similar recommended depths.
On the first lots?
Correct, yeah, for the thirteen.
It's going to be, uh, accept the request for variance. I can print the recommended well that is on the plat.
I'm having an issue with this one, Brendan.
Booty seconded.
Uh, like I said, although, the only problem I got with it is if, if, you know, if it had been just the first lot, since then, but we went and created a whole nother section.
Yeah, that's my problem.
Was not intended. And therefore, so, if, if, if it had come through at the beginning. Obviously, we'd have had the water study. Uh, the well study and. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm a little hung on this one too. But I, I'm, I am glad to see they're going. Deep, you know, uh.
Yeah, but tell me, there's no guarantee you can't even make them go deep.
No, 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 I know, it, it, it's the only thing you can do.
I'd like to encourage that we put it on the.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, discussion. I got a motion and second all in favor is your hand. All opposed.
I think it's gonna be okay.
Put the note on the.
Yes, I'll put that on.
Note that I voted for the water for the whole vote.
They got it. Motion cast. Thirty-three, discuss and take action to. Clarify Luke Williams variance request to onsite sewer facility regulations of Walker County regarding permit number two thousand dash. Six eight oh six related to title thirty tech, chapter two eight five point eight three.
Just as, uh, clean up to make sure that we got this right, the initial variance. Was to follow the T C method of putting the pipe below ground and sleeve. Uh, what they, what they want to do, what they have done is they want to use a, a, a small steel casing pipe. Extend it across the top, it's a fairly small, I will say it's a very small, uh. Little tributary, uh, and casing that above grade. So basically go.
It's about a foot down, right, according to the branch.
Couple of feet deep.
Yeah.
Want to go across it, uh, above rate with a steel casing pipe. And run the line inside that so that it's easier to repair or inspect or whatever if there's leakage.
Yeah, I actually talked to Wendell about it, I mean, even, I, I was aware before when we actually did this that. It was gonna be there above ground. But that, and there was some confusing or something that's why it's back up toward. But i- it's, it's a pretty common practice, we have two major sewer, cities sewer lines crossing Robinson Creek at my house. The same way, so you can visually see that's, you know, what's something wrong with it, uh. The public safety according to him is where you can monitor it, if it's down below, you could never be able to know something was wrong with it.
This is the, the F line that's going out to the disposal there, this is the. Old street plan, everything popped out to the disposal building that's crossing that. Um, and it's a small diameter line, uh, they have a small diameter. With no schedule misses. Uh, and then that just, they would extend that across the creek, they won't leave it that way, so I hope they'll bring it back to make sure. The court was okay with that.
Yeah, and you know, of course, if you look at the windows back, I'd be really excited in there anyway. You know, but anyway, I make a motion to approve it as they have it themselves.
Motion cast. Thirty-four, discuss and take action on Melacon, McComber one LLC, Jeremy Melacon. Request for variance to section eleven point one of Walker County subdivision regulations regarding minimum lot frontage.
The existing drive, he's looking at dividing the drive. He has, uh, roughly eighty foot staff going out to the road now. Um, our minimum flag requirement. Um, so there's, there's, what he's requesting is to divide one of the two tribes, uh, believed by. And he's here today, if you guys have any questions, I'll let him speak, but that's, that's the essentials of it before we're going to. Formally file a plat with us, he's trying to get this, this variance request, uh, before commissioner.
Andy, what is the purpose of it? I mean, we're selling land or?
Has to do with the business.
Jeremy Watson, this is my personal residence, I own it in an LLC. Probably would go back in time and redo that, but I have a loan in the LLC's name and the. I'm, I'm trying to split it to where this part is in my personal name for a different loan, I have no intentions of splitting, selling. There's a way to do it where I didn't have to do this, so I'd like to, uh. But I, I, I don't want to do anything with the property, I want it to stay as a whole, this is just for loan requirements.
So.
There's two residents, Parker, Jimmy, you and, you and your folks, right? Yeah.
And then we have a different piece of property in the back room on Marv's.
This all family related? I, I don't have a problem as long as it's not selling a piece of land to outsider or something.
Is the proposal to split the frontage between the two tracks or provide an easement access to?
It's just an easement, because it, like I said, it's just pre-work, we're not, we're not even building fences.
You have any issues, Andy?
I mean, I, I have to bring it to you guys, we don't normally allow subdivision off of easement, but that's why it's in here.
So the track to the north, you don't own that, is that your track also?
Here.
Swinging a mess though.
All you've got is an eighty foot.
That's all I had.
Going up stack of easement on top of it for both parts, pieces of property to utilize the same eighty foot flag.
Same driveway, same everything.
Okay.
Y'all got any problems?
I just don't like.
I've got a. Like you're down the road, you're gonna have trouble with this.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I would actually, I, I know, I don't think there's any way to do this, if I could make it to where I wasn't allowed to. Split it again after this, I'd be fine with that, I don't want two tracks of property, it's a finance thing for the bank.
It's not finance, what, what I always, if you.
Huh? If you have.
That's how I got here, is I, I, I went down this path all the way to here. Not realizing I was still having to fall in, I thought it was a finance exemption, actually, I thought it was a ten acre exemption. Um, so.
Yeah, so, I think the court's aware, but we have exemptions for ten acres and we have exemptions for finance, partial finance, on partial financing. But both of those have a front minimum front of your part.
Your, your problem is not you, it may not be your kids, but it your grandkids and great-grandkids, that's when the problem's gonna be.
They won't be able to develop or sell or anything too much of anything with it, other than let's sell the whole track or something.
So, so what you're saying is they would have a problem, they would only be able to sell it as one track.
Basically, I mean.
And I'd be happy with that because I, I want it to stay one track.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to subdivide any.
Just like you were.
The alternative would be to, to divide, just to physically split the access that he has. Uh, but he's on an easement, uh, so. Pretty good.
Now, like the flag, the, the long skinny piece, that's not easement, he owns that, right?
I own it, it's one track.
Tell me how you feel. Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Now, what we love though, I mean.
Is it approval of divisional easement or do you want to split the frontage you have?
Which one, which one do you really want? What do you need?
Want to put a forty foot staff down to the, the one and a.
Yeah.
I'd like to leave it however I have it so I don't pay another.
Yeah, I, I'd do it by the easement, Jimmy.
Yeah.
I really don't want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it easy, buddy.
Court's decision, I, my advice is, you know, generally you guys tie people, some minimum frontage requirement. Um, but it's your decision to make. Uh, I, uh, we don't, we don't make, normally make recommendations to allow division with no frontage at all. So reduced frontage is less of a variance than all but courts decision.
I, I just don't like it, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, no harm, I don't, I don't know you, but you could sell it tomorrow. And that's, that's the world we have to live in, that you can sell it tomorrow and then somebody shows up and says, hey, I'm ready, I got my eight hundred thousand dollar house, they're pouring his lab today. And I want to cut this off in here, like, you can't, sorry, you can't do any of that. You know, you're stuck.
If he put half with each, then he would only be about. These, these are the two proposed lawsuits here in here.
Yes, sir.
So if you put half with each, he would only be about ten foot off on each one, it would be a ten foot variance to the minimum fifty foot staff with.
What I, what I'd like to have seen prior to would be, hey, I've talked to that property owner and requested twenty more feet from end to end and. Offering fair market value for that property so I can do this without a. You know, without having to come here, because remember we fall back on. A financial burden, it's not a variance standard, it's just a, this request, so. There's a financial burden that had not been addressed here, it's like, you know, this is a last resort, this is all I can do to make this property usable, I need your help. Here, there's still an option of, hey, we could make that staff a hundred feet wide, make it two fifty feet staffs. Be in compliance and we never have to look back, it's, it's, it's a done deal. That's my, that's my thoughts on it.
Well, that would take the cooperation of the, the, of the landowner, that's not.
I don't know, I don't have a.
I can. Or the other.
Uh, that one we gotta build.
Yeah.
Almost on the property.
Yeah. Yeah, there, yeah, what you, what you don't see is up there in that corner there, here's about a, what, two hundred by two hundred. Do what, Andy?
We normally tend to like look at the least variance, so the least variance would be two forty foot staffs, but it's up to the condition.
I, I would rather see the forty foot.
Is it he has road frontage on both properties?
With the work by easement for?
Yeah, as long as he don't never sell.
Now, there's nothing in our code that prohibits him from two forty foot staffs and co-granting an easement across the top of the staffs. As long as they have the staffs. So in other words, we're not, there's nothing in our code that required to build a new driveway, it would just be that it may be running down the property.
Only thing about that is you're gonna have to bring the staff down and turn it to the track then. You're not gonna be able to just dump it into that one hundred acre track here.
You're gonna turn it.
You're gonna have to turn it and make that staff go all the way to the.
Uh, the family grant?
Yeah.
God, they all that work.
Didn't used to, but now you do. Yeah. And we're dealing with some of those old ones that didn't.
Yeah, a lot of the old ones didn't have it, but anyway, my motion was, uh, easement, right, is that where we?
I'd make, I'd make your motion two forty foot staffs with an easement across, and I'll give you a yes on that, I'm not gonna no, just. That's where we're going.
And just, like, we're understanding with these. Would require him to. To extend that forty foot to get it over to that second trial.
Mm-hmm, into it.
Yeah.
No, you would have to turn.
Talking about.
And tie into the other track, track one and two, you got to have something to get into track one.
Make it up, right, no, 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 sir, I mean, that's where you got access.
And it's.
One and two, you got to have something to get into track one.
Make it up, right, no, 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 sir, I mean, that's where you got access.
Yeah. I don't like it, but I'd do it with a split, with a, with a certified split.
Let's do the two forty foot staff with the easement.
We've done forties before, brother.
Yeah, we've done forty foot with several folks.
All right, I'll give it, that'll be my session too.
I got a motion, it's second all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thirty-five, discuss and take action on allocation of additional funds for engineering service contracts.
Just to make sure we keep the budget up, we're requesting adding. Thousand, that, two additional projects that are, that are fixing. Probably come in, so. Just want to make sure we're covered in the year. The request is to add fifty thousand to the account.
We're blowing it on bill.
So. Move that pitch thousand from general fund contingency to the.
Engineering service contract.
Engineering service contract budget.
We got fifty thousand in there, Patricia. Maybe we better ask before we do it.
Second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion cash. Budget workshop, not everybody wants to stay for that.
Send me today if you're, such a request. Uh, so it's basically. Uh, all the requests made by the partners. Uh, and then, uh, the backup. Standard on. Um, the second thing wanted to talk about was scheduling of the meetings. Generally, we have, we have meetings during the month of July, I was wanting to. Look at the county leaders. Each of these, uh, the departmental presentations and. You'll have your actual budget workbook, will, uh, unbalanced numbers or estimated unbalanced numbers are beginning balances. Uh, that we can start going through in July.
So I don't think we met last year weekly.
Mm-mm, it went pretty quick last year.
Yeah, so, so I'd wish y'all would go through, make a note of what y'all'd like to hear from departments. We'll call those in after first discussion going through it. And we'll have them present, maybe that'll save us some time on letting everybody read their budget request.
I feel like you're at least when the opportunities come in. You know, if they want to, I mean, that is the only time of year you really can be in front of. I know it's part of the process, but, uh, I think, you know, obviously. If they want to come, I'm more than willing to sit with them, so.
Well, I'm kinda same way with them, if they want to come, let them come.
But it needs to be scheduled.
We, we've asked every year, nobody wanted to come, they just told us that nobody scheduled. Well, ask again.
Yeah.
So.
Well, if they don't come, the chances aren't, like you know.
It would be my assumption that there would, there was quite a few that would want to get presentations on the.
And I hadn't looked through this book.
I hadn't even looked at it at all, Patricia, I can't, like a comment. But if they're asking for stuff, they probably need to be here.
Yeah.
Are we at six million yet for only one cost?
It's fat, I know that.
Yeah, we're at five of the day.
That's why, that's.
Yeah, uh. We've had some increases, some decreases, but, uh, I think our end goal. It's on up.
So I, I did have a question, I was looking. I was looking at, uh, Bartez, the, the. Four SRO officers?
Uh, three would be a continuation of the officers he has. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, I think New Waverly School District has asked for. An additional officer there, I don't know if they've received a grant or they're expecting a grant, but, uh.
Wonder why they broke out like that.
I think the intent is that, uh, New Waverly through their grant or through their own budget would pay for the seventy percent. Assets fund policy and the, uh, county would fund thirty.
My question is the three that we. Why don't we make you?
It's an annual contract.
With New Waver.
Okay.
When they do Waverly, come up with a longer term contract. I need them to commit a little longer. You don't want to come every year. If you don't, come every year. They'll do a three or five year, we can do it three or five year.
And, and each year, the, the contract amount varies based on what. Cost of living is being given increases in fuel, because what they pay is a percentage of estimated cost.
But we've already got that worked into the. Tax rate, right?
What's in the tax rate is seventy, I mean, thirty percent.
Is of the three.
Thirty percent for each.
Yeah, right. So, but when he asks, as an ongoing cost, that's already in the tax rate.
And you'll see, there's no money listed to the side, they're authorizing the officer. And then who would be authorizing the, uh, and if you gave a salary increase, you're authorizing thirty percent. Salary increase, so not the full thirty percent shows up each year as an increase. But, um, keep the position and.
I wish I had no.
It actually, when we count the raw budget. Or the county would budget seventy, an additional thirty percent.
Yeah, and. I know we've. As far as the vehicle for that. I had to, on our seventy, thirty computation, it's been a while since I seen it. Do we, did we prorate the cost of a vehicle out over like five or six years? I thought we did. Okay.
Everything.
Okay.
There's your guy.
That's all I had was, um. The need for additional meetings and.
It wasn't, you're, uh. I did not hear you a while ago when you said what day you're gonna have, you wanna have those on?
Uh, that would be determined by Commissioner's Court.
I thought you had.
If we get a pile of people that says, hey, well, I wanna come and talk, then we'll start booking stuff. If it's three people. We'll play it by ear and we'll see what happens.
To go through all of these and make decisions in two days.
Yeah.
No.
And if we only have two meetings in July, that's what you would be doing.
Well, what's gonna happen is what always happens, we'll sit up here and ask a bunch of questions, you ain't got answers to, and then we gotta come back. Back and forth, so.
Yeah, how much money we actually got to spend and not got?
I opened this and looked for two minutes and I closed it.
Yeah, it don't take long enough, man.
People for the next meeting on the thirtieth?
Just ask who wants to come talk.
Okay, but for the next one, right?
I tried, public comments.
Homework.
Questions from media. It's in the thing, just discussion, yeah, I, we just put one in there long term for whatever buildings on a tax rate. To start working toward growth. Whether it goes for a building, a road, or whatever. So, Commissioner's Court got anything?
Not after I looked in this book.